It's five o'clock, I call this work session to order. Discussion items, is there any one of these that council members would like to start with?
Yeah, we're working on it.
First up is the Climate Mobilization Action Plan. Is there any discussion on this? Strong feelings either way on this?
I think you definitely put some time in coming up with what you came up with. I'm also sure that it focuses on maybe some of the community might be looking for something. I don't know how to word it, more or quicker.
Don't, do the city already adopt something along this line a couple years ago?
We adopted the emergence and climate declaration. And within it, I believe there was a statement that we would come up with a plan for further reductions. Plan of what, how we were going to address what we felt were issues of concern.
Is this, how is this different than that?
I think, you know, the, the history of this is we asked for outside help and this is the, the report that they came back with. So.
I think, I think the other, the other was more or less a declaration that we were going to move forward with this. This is more of, this is what we're, what we're.
Yes, yes.
I think part of the big problem with some of the stuff that we, we use as a city is, you know, gasoline colored stuff, the, the technology's just not there yet for it. I mean, it's, it's there, but for battery operated lawnmowers and battery operated weed whackers. On the scale that we're doing mowing and stuff like that, those, those aren't feasible right now.
I've heard that lawn mowers spend more time charging their electric lawnmower than they do actually mowing grass with it.
And they're only using that at the campground from what I understand.
They're just not, the, the technology, like you said, is not there.
I mean, you'd have to have some batteries for a decent sized riding lawnmower, but. You know, then you'd have to have them scattered all over the city to charge it all the time just to, just to be able to run all day.
Right.
I've, I've looked at the same thing with my personal business, I haven't even gotten an electric weed whacker yet. I would just, you know, if, if you get the job where you got a weed whacker at half an hour or 35 minutes, if you don't have, towards your fully charged batteries, you're not going to get it done.
And you gotta go to the next customer.
The more holistic solution to that might be what's, what's outlined there. The first bullet point on the Mobilization Action Plan where it talks about having a look at what areas do we expect really need and want to mow and identifying the other areas and, you know, and they get species planted there, letting it, letting it grow wild. That cuts down the total area to mow, whether you use gas or batteries, I would say, it's a positive.
More stuff to let go wild, more deer you're gonna let.
Tell that to the, 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 I think you're discussing.
Looking at and reading it, I mean, it's, it's a good starter. I mean, it's got the community focus, it's got, I mean, citywide focus and community focus. I mean, it's, it's worked out, it's pretty easy. I'm always the one for utilizing the KISS principle. And I think this, this works.
Well, and I think it's a, it's a living, it should be a living document.
Yep, as things change, technology changes.
Right. Not an end-all, be all end-all.
Recycling of various recyclables that tried before when plums used to be over here on Colby. Across the way to Greenhouse there, they used to have big dumpster bins there and it was always just a mess. Nobody wanted to keep it up or take care of it. At that time, you know, the, the intentions were good, but it didn't work because people put the wrong things in the wrong places and it became just too much of a hassle or mess.
I think we had a pretty good thing in our voice for, you know, the station out there. I mean, there was closest to recycle stuff out there and, you know, they keep a pretty good eye on it from large, you know, if there are people that want to participate, they participate. And things we looked at, like the, uh, the junk pickup, that kind of works its way out with recyclables. Because any metal or anything else ends up getting taken down anyways. And I'll, if we ever get down to that point where we get those, we'll throw one again, so. Watch all pickers come through and, you know, anything and everything they get.
So, on the sheet it says, if acceptable, the plan will be presented to council at your next meeting for approval.
Is this the plan?
Basically, what, what you have in front of you is, my understanding is, the staff's plan.
So, the education, uh, on forest conservation, all those things. This, is this going to be done for free and how are you gonna educate everybody on all those things without costing money?
Social media, a lot of it.
And as with any plan, without dollars to support it, it's not gonna, nothing's gonna happen. And that's something that as, as a council, we have to decide what kind of dollars we'd want to throw at these issues.
Because it has no monetary values attached to any of these things, how much they might cost to do it or any of that.
That's true, and, and these things where it says provide education on alternative and viable options that residents can substitute for salt, okay? Someone's, someone's gonna have to do that research. It is, and that.
Unless it's already been done by somebody, then I'm all right.
There's gotta be some blank social media campaigns for some of these items that we can pick off and just put out, they've already prepackaged it for what, what they're trying to do. Like those would be easy ones to start and it doesn't cost us anything for education, except for brand design.
Yeah, there's some rein, reinvent the wheel there.
Right, there, there should be stuff out there already.
But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be some dollars associated with.
Some of it, micro insulation in the, in the facilities, I mean, especially there, I mean, and purchases of, purchases of vehicles and stuff like that.
I think, I think by council approving this plan, we're, we're giving staff the go-ahead to.
Further develop it.
And, and a cost, right, and if a cost are incurred, then, then it's responsible, responsible to designate funds to cover that.
Not these things, anything that's energy efficiency, like insulation, if you mentioned. You look at the whole life cycle of the expenditure. If it's done right, you should be coming out ahead, if you're not coming out ahead, you've done something wrong as far as efficiency needs go.
Developing and implementing a composting system at all cities, buildings, locations. That's, that sounds like a big deal. Who's gonna, who's gonna take care of this composting system at each, so you build in your location, you know? That sounds like dollars.
And maybe what happens is the staff says, okay, this is what it's gonna cost to do that. Council, do you want to spend that money to do that? I think we're, we're gonna be living with this for a long time. We're gonna be looking at everything and saying, okay, is this a, a good expenditure of the public's money?
So, each of these things are gonna eventually come to a, a goal as to whether they should have money spent on them, basically.
I wouldn't think so. And it, and it may not be within a year, two years, I don't know. This is, as, as I said, this is a, a living document that, that should be, that we should be. I, I think we've got to focus now on, we're, we're trying to help the, the environment, not hurt it. We need to look at what, what we're doing and is, is this helpful or is it hurting? And, and should we spend the money to do this or, or not spend the money doing what we're doing?
Yeah, sometimes.
I mean, this isn't a, okay, here we go, we're done, we don't have to do anything more. There's a lot of responsibility in this document, I believe. And there's a commitment on, hopefully on the council's part to, to do the best job we can for the people of this community.
I like the idea, if the bird likes the LED, of course, that's already going on, so.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of these things were already in the houses.
Can we do more, of course we can. Is it gonna cost more? I'm sure it will. But when it comes to spending dollars, then it, then it becomes a, 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 something that this, this council or the next council, future councils have to decide, is that a, a good expenditure?
It's a good base, but I really would like to see something from each department head of, oh, not necessarily that, but more along the lines of where they feel, we talked about when the, the consultant came in. You know, we've got to look at their position and see if that needs to be done. Let's actually prioritize stuff and put some dollars to it and start moving forward and making sure that the efficiency of our existing equipment is where it can be and hence where we can save money to help pay for stuff. And kind of grow from there. I mean, the base of the document, I think, is, is there. But we have to have some follow-through on what we're gonna do. Which is kind of lacking right there, right now, but doesn't make any difference.
Oh, have to come up with a five-year plan or three-year plan or whatever they decide to do and kind of what we do with parts plan and everything else. Come up with a plan and do this, this and this, this year, this, next year, because it's a big item and walk our way down.
Start picking at stuff. Make, make the, the ones that are physically easy now and then in the future, we can talk about the ones that are gonna actually cost more on our budget.
We should be looking at what, what's gonna have the, the greatest impact. What, what can we do that's gonna have the best bang for the dollar? And that, and that's something that, if you're right, if we need to have department heads say, okay, this is what we think we can do. This is an idea of what it costs and then they can give back to staff and say, okay, here you go, here's all these.
Yeah, this is an energy saving, if we're spec, if we're expecting how much it's gonna save us.
Counsel, what do you want to spend your money on? I'm, at thi, at this point, I'm, I'm okay with it, accepting this as a, as a plan. With the understanding that it's not the all end-all.
I guess we're on that, we, we've got to start somewhere.
Right.
And this, after we do it, I think there's at least a good start.
Right.
And if they have to make changes in the future, so be it.
Right, I agree.
I agree also.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, it sounds like we have a consensus on that, so let's move on to deer control.
Uh, I just like to start, I looked at the, the ordinance, it looks good. The only thing that Roger's not here to find out why is that, why are we giving you a, a background check on an applicant that wants to, that wants to hunt the city, I don't understand why we're, from, from this job, I don't understand why you do that.
And, and Montague does that and I, I don't want to speak for them, but I, I, I listened and I, I was at their council meetings, what they were going through all this, and I think there was just some concern that there wasn't some crazy gonna come into their town and, and get a license and start shooting.
I, I guess it depends on what kind of background check they're talking about, whether to run them on the lean system and see if they got warrant. I mean, I, I don't know, what do you think, Chris? I see you back there. You had, did you have an idea with them? So, background check that.
I, I would think it would just be a local background check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just, I think they're probably just checking the city, I mean, if the person's been in trouble with the DNR before with.
Violating or something like that, then no, he don't want to hunt the city.
Who's this person that we're, we're giving approval to?
Better weapon. Yeah, I mean.
The bow and arrow.
I al, I always hesitate, I mean, looking at the background check, because you can go from, yep, I know Steve, to, yep, I'm gonna do a deep dive and sign this piece of paper and I'm gonna find out, sixth grade. You know, just, it's, it's the only concern that I really saw, and so it, it didn't look good. I like the process, the process of being more, uh, property owners being able to band together to come up with the top, come up with the appropriate amount. Um, I, the only thing I'm, I'm really still, still property and, and stuff like that, but I mean, we can, we can see how it goes. And just like the last document, we can, this is pretty much a living document or, I don't know what happened to the deer, but this is a living document as far as the student role. And if we don't like it, we can make changes.
That's true.
And at any time, we can stop it.
Yep.
Or allow property, certain areas and certain chunks of property in the city, granted that we can allow that to happen.
As with anything, we can see how this, yep, how it works and if it's not working, then we stop it. If it's working and it needs tweaking, then we tweak it.
Yep.
Unless there's a great outcry from the, the public.
I read a lot of good things from the public, at least from the, the things that I've seen on social media, et cetera. There've been quite a few people that, there's been one that's a concern and, and just like anything else, I mean, you go out to, you go out to Duck Lake State Park during, uh, during the hunting season and you don't know who's in the tree. Um, you know, it's, it's, there's always risk in life and this is, I mean, we're shooting down, we're not shooting flat. I mean, arrows aren't anything like bullets, you know, go very far, very fast and more faster than they used to do. Distance as far as miles, it all doesn't happen, so.
My only big problem with it is, that, that I said, when we first started discussing it was a, I still think six acre is too big. I would like to have seen it be at least down to four. But I, I realize you got the hundred and fifty foot, you know, buffer from roads and hundred and fifty foot buffer from buildings. I mean, the purpose of coming up with this is to try to eliminate deer out of the city. And I, I don't know how many six acre parcels you're gonna find in the city that people are gonna be able to hunt from that's gonna help eliminate deer. I mean, that's, that's kind of my problem. I, I'm all in favor of trying this, uh, it's just like the last one, we got to start somewhere, but there's so many. My fear is there's so many restrictions in this, that is anybody gonna even try to.
Or you're gonna notice a difference.
Yeah, I didn't.
As, as with any ordinance, you know, if we, we put it in place and, and find that it's not meeting the desired results, then we adjust it. There, I, I don't know, I, I don't know if there's a legal reason why it's at six acres rather than four. And I think it's mostly public fear, so.
Well, and, and like not being able to use public money and, and granted, uh, you know, I wouldn't want to see a necessary one in our parks and stuff where they could be people using deer around, but. And here, just using it as an example and, and for Jeff, who's pretty much across the street from me, but. Right behind me on Alice Street is the baseball fields, which are not used in the fall. But, uh, there's nobody here back there. And there is a big area between the fields and the back, like my backyard, and there are a ton of deer. I mean, we get them all the time, though.
Absolutely, my hostas and my pines.
And there would, there would be plenty of good spots for somebody to set up back there and not be anywhere near anything that they're gonna, you know, any houses or anything like that.
Is that public land?
It's school, school property, so it is probably. See, well, so that's, that's one of the things that they're recommending in here is that we don't utilize public's money. Our city, city property or school property.
Does the DNR just put a setback requirement? I'm not familiar, is that all there is or do they have a acre amount?
No, it's a setback, um.
It's, it's a hundred and fifty yards, but you're talking guns, they're a hundred and fifty yards from occupied dwelling. So, if you got an abandoned house, I mean, this says any building, that really doesn't make much sense. I mean, that means you gotta be more than a hundred and fifty feet from the back of your own garage or something, you know? And the DNR allows people to hunt from their own backyard as long as they're not a hundred and fifty yards from their neighbor or something like that. I mean, those, those rules are different than what we're talking here.
I don't think it's a hundred and fifty yards.
Feet, feet.
In there, well, the DNR is a hundred and fifty yards, but they don't discriminate between bows and guns either. So, the DNR is a hundred and fifty yards, four hundred and fifty feet.
It's kind of what Dick said a minute ago, I'd be inclined to make the decision about city property, but the school district property, uh, discretion of the, the school board.
Right, it's gonna ultimately be their decision.
Right.
We're not gonna tell them anything, it's a property.
If they don't want to, then they don't have to, but I wouldn't want to prevent them.
And I wouldn't, you know, certainly wouldn't say, yeah, we open up all school property, but there are, there are areas that the school owns that, well.
That's in Warren.
That, uh, yeah, I was gonna say, that's the.
They don't show that.
Charlotte over to Warner Street, yeah. I mean, how many acres are in that? A lot, not a lot of them here, but there's gotta be at least thirty acres in there. So. There's cer, there's certain areas of the school property that I think could be utilized.
I'd want that to be an option as long as the school board was agreeable to, but it's, it sounds like it, it could work.
I would say we move forward with this as written and see how it works out.
Yeah, very good, that's a start.
This is not gonna be a, a overnight thing, it's gonna take time to, to put this into place and to work out some other details and maybe we, next year, get a year behind this, see how it goes. Get some real empirical evidences, yeah, we're not getting the deer that we thought we would get or whatever. Then change, change it as we be.
See how many people are actually willing to, to do, you know, to get involved with it.
How many complaints we get, you know, we're gonna do, you know, maybe there's complaints and things like that, I suppose.
So, unless there's strong opposition to, to going forward with it as, as it is. At least that, if we send the recommendation, yeah, go forward with it, it goes forward. Otherwise, we can, we can be discussing this for, for a long time.
Well, the framework for it's all there, right, like you said, I, I just prefer to see it even be smaller, so we're, we're actually controlling what we want to control. You know, I'm not gonna vote no on it, just because it's, you know, six acres, you can stand up for it.
Okay.
Anything's better than nothing at this point.
You're right, you're right.
I'm not gonna vote no on it either, but I don't really think it's gonna make much difference.
I don't either.
Not, not those kind of regulations.
Until we have it in place and, and functioning, it's all, you know, doesn't mean anything. Until we got real information of it in place and, and reports of how it's doing, then we adjust it from there.
So, looking at, just doing some rough research here, I'm still looking at, you know, it's four hundred and fifty feet for a firearm. There's nothing, nothing says anything about.
They don't say about clothes?
Nothing about clothes. Um, rough, a, a rough acre is two hundred and ten feet square, so two-ten by two-ten. And you can move that in what you want to. So, s, six times that would be what we currently are looking at, or you can go four times that, which would be.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, something by eight hundred.
It's square.
It's square, yeah.
The, the council has the ability to amend and change ordinances at any council meeting.
If it doesn't work this year, we can, at least gotta get it on the books, so I mean, October first is the, is the opening day of, of the year.
Let's move on to returning attendance. What's on, on that?
I think we should continue to do what we're doing with the mayor meeting. I know who likes this lot, there you go, either's fine with me, I.
The only concern like, like Keith's, I mean, the road Keith's going down, I can just, about the time we don't, because being on a couple other boards, there are times when it would be nice to be able to bend that year. And if they're not there, you've gotta bend it and then come back to the next meeting in two weeks and get information that way versus something that can, if we step up, step the wrong way, one way or the other, they can pull us back and say, hey, yeah, we should do that or whatever.
And then mistakes hap, mistake happens, how much it will cost us to rectify that with them anyways.
That's, that's certainly fine too, the other, some places separate between the work session and, and the regular meetings too, where, you know, we're not doing.
That makes sense.
That's, yeah, that makes sense.
That's, that's another option. But again, I'm, I'm, either any of those options are fine with me and if, if, or if there's just something where, you know, it's gonna be one of those five-minute meetings and not, you can just always say at that, ahead of time, hey, you know, I think we're good.
So, we can cancel your, your attendance?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine too, you know, I know some of those meetings, you know, they're only gonna be.
Right, exactly.
We've had, yeah, I mean, we've had a meeting out tonight, we've, you know, one item.
One item.
You know, we've had big, you know, there's, yeah, there's.
Yes.
Nothing on the agenda and we're done in, you know, ten minutes.
Right.
To have wheels drive all the way up here.
Right, I, I agree, I think that's.
So, that's fine too, you know, so the, the assumption can be I'll attend unless you say, nah, we're, we're good, or the other way around. I'm not gonna attend unless it's, maybe it's easier, maybe to start, say, I'll attend, but if you say no, I, no, doesn't bother me at all and, and, um, and I don't come, and then if, that seems like it's going okay, you can change that as you, as, as you go along as well.
So, you're charging us by hours if you don't.
So, I, I think it, it, I mean, if we can save taxpayers some, some dollars, then it's a good thing.
Yeah, I would definitely say work sessions, if we'll mention.
I agree.
Council members can't, we can't go on anything that, that work session.
And again, if there's something that you, like if you're discussing an ordinance and you want it there, that's fine too. But if it's talking about stuff that doesn't, isn't really legal, that's, that's not good.
Council members aren't bonded anyway, so you don't have to defend us in court if you say something that somebody didn't like.
No.
Observation. All right, well, I think we're directly, we're ready to go with that. So, then, no more May. I certainly, uh, think it's a, a, a good idea to, uh, say, I guess what this is calling for is saying that we're going to, uh, suspend our ordinance for grass height throughout May.
So our first agenda, it does fit with that.
I don't have a problem with that, but it, it encourages people, but there's no, um. Police cruisers cruising around going, everybody mowing his grass and it's May fifteenth and we're gonna give him a ticket. I don't wanna see a border.
Well, I, I don't think there's anything there that, that says.
There's no border.
The, the recommendation, yeah.
We're just not going to enforce the.
Six inch, six inch whatever it is.
I'm sure.
Rich. We're not really enforcing that much, no.
I'm sure the officers love going out and knocking on somebody's door and asking them to mow it off.
I don't think we've probably ever asked anybody to mow their lawn because it was too long in May. Of, of, of that, it was, it's been never.
Well, this man was so cold the whole month that I don't think the grass even started growing though, June, pretty much. Most cases.
So it doesn't sound like there's any opposition to do it.
No, as long as, you know, like I say, as long as it's, as long as you're not telling people that you can't.
No.
Which, which we're not, you know, as far as, it's holding that back for the month.
It's a good thing to let the, the grass grow and let the pollinators get there, really start.
Nothing else, then let's open it up for public comment.
Do you have one?
Oh, yes.
Question really quick. Well, I mentioned a couple meetings ago about abandoned, uh, utility infrastructure. Did you ever, do you have a chance to look into if they're required by, if we can require them to take abandoned structures down?
Uh, no, I, I didn't. I don't know if I was. I'm checking. What is that?
Uh, Frontier's going through, they're doing everything pyroptic. From what I understand, they're going to leave all the existing system that they're abandoning up in there, so. We're working to put everything, we're taking, you know, requiring everything underground on new stuff. You know, having extra stuff in there that doesn't work, there's just gonna have to be things.
More stuff to fall down and.
More, yeah, more stuff falling, try to drop what is.
Anything that. Public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamara Horn. I'm a resident of the city of Whitehall. I wanted to, uh, say that I think Ms. Glansey did a good job with her research and writing the Climate Mobilization Action Plan. And as many of you said, I think it's a really good start for the city to start implementing some of those, so I hope. That when it comes up on the agenda during your council meeting, that you will vote and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I too, uh, was very encouraged to see this come up on your plan and up on your agenda. And I, um, came tonight with the idea of making some apologies for past thoughts and comments that I've made. I did have, you know, when I heard that, uh, this, uh, plan was turned over and was going to be developed by a college student. I, I didn't think much of that, uh, but I have to say now that I think, uh, Ms. Glansey, is that her name, Glansey? Uh, just did an excellent job. It was comprehensive. It stated the needs. It was fact-based. And, um, as I think that you gentlemen have spoken out to, uh, it is in need of figure out how to. There's no cost estimates in it, it needs, and it also needs some definite time targets, I would say. You know, that we want this to happen and it should happen by February of next year or whatever would be helpful for that to happen. One thing I, I guess I would ask that you do when you start thinking about cost is that you look into the available grants through the state or through the federal government. That could help you. Uh, you might even find members of the community willing to help or organizations in the community willing to help. Co-fund some things. So I, I do make apologies for that and I also was reflecting back, uh, to a meeting we had with David Sifka, the planning meeting. When I, uh, when public comments were available, I made a comment that had to do with, um. A good leadership quality and that leadership quality is being able to, uh, move forward from, uh, one's past. Beliefs and past, um, decisions. And to take in new information and move forward and listening to you tonight, I felt like I, I saw some of that. So I apologize for the past because I didn't believe it would happen with this particular commission. Well, I guess that's, uh, my apologies and I look forward to hopefully, uh, seeing this move forward. And asking the community how they can help.
Thank you for your comment.
Uh, hi, my name is John Horn. Um, yeah, basically what they said. Um, I thought the plan was excellent. Um, I hope you guys approve it. I hope you throw a lot of money at it. That's it. Thanks.
Shania Cabadas on fourteen Alice Street. I see a few former fellow folks up there. Four of you actually, actually, so, um. I wanna thank you for the discussion that you had. I appreciated the, the questions, the comments and the discussion. And I wanna thank you in advance, hopefully, for a positive vote. Um, I would encourage you to do a little more research on the electric power battery issue. Um, in particular, um, I don't know if you are familiar with Carl Bloss from Consumers. Uh, he is the electric vehicle program manager. And he's the guy who sets up electric, um, rides and things like that. He is probably the top expert I know of, um, on electric vehicles, including those that, that might relate to equipment and machinery. And so, um, I can get you his contact information. He actually had a career and then he retired and the next day got hired by Consumers because he was so nuts about electric vehicles. So he has electric bikes, motorcycles, cars, et cetera. Um, I, I wonder, um, I agree that it's a good plan. I think you really got a good deal, a thousand dollars, pretty cheap for a fairly good, thorough, um, examination of the issues. Um, I read it quickly a couple of times and I'm wondering if there might be a place for you at some point maybe down the road to include some discussion of climate change impacts. And how the city is preparing for climate change impacts, um, unless that's in another place. Um, you know, you cannot avoid seeing the impacts on the news every night, the flooding. Uh, we are probably in a relative sweet spot in Michigan, but we're not gonna be immune from some of the flooding and extreme heat and different things like that. And so just wanna throw that out there as a topic to consider, uh, incorporating at some point. Also, uh, in particular on the education front, you may wanna stay in touch with Monahue and the city of Muskegon. Uh, there are three communities, as, as I know you're well aware, who have a climate emergency declaration and I think it probably, um. As my mother would say, behooves you, English major mom, um, to stay in contact and see, so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Um, uh, on the educational front, um, but also, um, you know, in some of the other areas. I, I would love to see a, a three-point press release from the three cities talking about how all of the cities are stepping up to address climate change in this fashion. I, I think my only critique of the plan is there were like continue to investigate, a few continues, continue to do this, continue to do that. And I would like to encourage you to, at least at some point, look at that and see if you can move a little faster. You know, the, the impacts are here. Uh, I think it's probably obvious to anybody, uh, that the impacts are here. Um, they were predicted. Um, they're happening faster than even some of the scientists thought and to the degree that we can get solutions in place. Um, we're all gonna be better off, including our kids and our grandkids. Last of all, there was a, a talk about recycling. And I wanna mention to you that my organization, West Michigan Environmental Action Council. Me, my organization, we are leading a feasibility study of recycling in Muskegon County. Um, Dick has joined, um, regularly, which I appreciate. Uh, we have invited every single municipality in the county. We've been working on this for over a year. And we're going to be looking at, we will have a updated, what's the state of recycling in Muskegon County? And we'll have some suggested things that we might wanna do, like maybe a central drop-off, uh, facility, which we don't have. Uh, making sure that we have drop-offs in the outlying areas. Uh, we have consistent educational messaging. We do not have any consistent educational messaging countywide on recycling, which is a distinct reason why our recycling rate is about twelve percent, which is lower than the state average. We will be rolling that out soon and I would encourage you all to take a look at the report, um, and offer your feedback. And also circulate it to folks that you know. So thanks again.
Lisa, pass that contact information along to.
Will do.
Anyone else want to speak? Sounds like it. All right, a little journey. All right, a little journey.
Yeah, it's not bad, buddy.
It's one thing if I work so hard.
A lot of water.
You don't really recover from that.
No, not even if they dry out.
Yeah, yeah.
So, like MA's, MA's, that's what I'm saying. MA in the sixes.
No pressure. All right, MA's.
Six o'clock, I call this council meeting order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the republic, where we stand, on the nation under God, indivisible, with the great and just. All right, first up is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move for approval of the agenda as submitted.
Second.
And second is any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those say no? Agenda is approved. All right, first up is a special presentation. RRC Essential Certification.
Good evening. Thank you so much for hosting me tonight. My name is Katie Higgs and I am the Community Planner with the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program as a part of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And I am excited to be here tonight to congratulate you, the city of Whitehall, on reaching Essentials designation with the RRC program. Whitehall has been engaged in the program since 2018 and has been working hard. And I especially want to congratulate Brenda for all of her work on this program. The Redevelopment Ready Communities Program is a voluntary technical assistance program with the MADC that communities across the state can engage in and work on a set of planning and development-related best practices to, you know, align and proactively prepare for development within their communities. And it is really reinforcing community-driven development in communities across the state of Michigan. So, I'm really pleased to present you this award tonight. There's also a package of information that I have sent to Brenda that lists the benefits of engaging with the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program and what the Essentials designation means for the city of Whitehall. And I am really thrilled to continue to support you and your work within the city over the next few years. And this designation is good for the next five years. So, congratulations. Whitehall is the fifteenth community in the state to achieve this status. And it is quite a heavy lift for communities. So, thank you so much for your participation and congratulations. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have any. But I will present this award. Yes, we'd love to get a picture.
I bet you get it. It's taking all the work, Brenda.
Yeah, can I, can we get a picture?
Sure.
I was gonna take the picture.
I can have it.
Will?
Where's the biggie?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, yeah, there you go.
Boom.
Where are your hands?
Okay.
There you go.
Hello? Oh, yeah, there you go.
That one was just a picture.
Yeah.
Say that again. All right.
Cheers. Cheers.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah.
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yes, you're welcome.
My pleasure.
I have a statement that the Redevelopment Ready Community Essentials designation would be a good thing for the continued growth of Whitehall. I'm glad that we now have the designation after a very long and thorough process. And I want to thank the staff of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the guidance and patience with this special task. Special thanks to our clerk, Brenda Bordan, for her leadership in obtaining the designation. I know it was a lot of work. I remember seeing the requirements at the very beginning of this process and thought it was going to be a long road. And it was.
And it was.
You've done an excellent job. Thank you so much. This is a good thing for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yes, you're welcome.
My pleasure.
I have a statement that the Redevelopment Ready Community Essentials designation would be a good thing for the continued growth of Whitehall. I'm glad that we now have the designation after a very long and thorough process. And I want to thank the staff of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the guidance and patience with this special task. Special thanks to our clerk, Brenda Bordan, for her leadership in obtaining the designation. I know it was a lot of work. I remember seeing the requirements at the very beginning of this process and thought it was going to be a long road. And it was.
And it was.
You've done an excellent job. Thank you so much. This is a good thing for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yes, you're welcome.
My pleasure.
I have a statement that the Redevelopment Ready Community Essentials designation would be a good thing for the continued growth of Whitehall. I'm glad that we now have the designation after a very long and thorough process. And I want to thank the staff of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the guidance and patience with this special task. Special thanks to our clerk, Brenda Bordan, for her leadership in obtaining the designation. I know it was a lot of work. I remember seeing the requirements at the very beginning of this process and thought it was going to be a long road. And it was.
And it was.
You've done an excellent job. Thank you so much. This is a good thing for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Next up is the consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. And second is any discussion? Questions, comments?
I have one question. And I'm not sure if Brenda can answer it or not, but she can pass it to whoever needs to.
I can wing it. Yes, there you go.
The last thing on the, on the last page. Eco Fuel Services. You don't happen to know what that is, do you?
No.
That's what I'm looking for. It says annual feed setup, modem, and install. Now, just, and it's under the motor pool fund. I was just kind of wondering if we could get a little bit more clarification on what it is.
Okay.
Since it was over $7,500.
Right, I'll see what I can find out for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes.
There's all, all these different expenses for all these different people that are involved in these plays, put on at the playhouse. Honky Tonk and Leaving Iowa and all that. Well, I, I would like to see, you know, how, how do, does the income from these things line up with, you know, all we see is expenses. We don't really know. Did the thing, was it worthwhile? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Right.
Was all that expense portioned? Did they sell us tickets to cover all this?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. How are you finding that out?
I can request that type of report. I think we've done that in the past too, where we have, it's difficult to see it all in one quick snapshot because there are some expenses that come out later or, you know, it's hard to always capture that in a snapshot. But I can certainly request it.
I, I.
And I think that back in the past is done like on the, on the year end, perhaps like more of a picture of more of the shows so you can see it in that type of layout rather than show by show.
We, we have gotten those in the past.
Yeah.
But one thing, and I don't know if you can pass it along and I don't even know if it's possible for me to do it. I'd like to see more of a breakdown per, per performance as far as, I mean, I know some of those run several days.
Right, right.
But they usually seem to lump everything all together. So, you don't really know if one of them's, one of them does good, does real good, and the other one fails.
Right.
You know, but we break even.
Right. And I know that Beth is certainly looking at those things as she goes along because her programming is based on being successful and choosing those types of shows. So, she's certainly looking for, you know, was that type of show successful or not? So, whether you'll see those in a snapshot, she is always looking for that type of information to make sure she's successful going forward. So, but yes, I can request it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
All those say no?
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Next up, messages. City manager tonight. Keith, you have anything?
Nothing this evening.
Keith?
Um, there was one question I had. I probably should have asked when we were talking about the money this time. No, actually, on the consent agenda. Um, was it the public county, county public works minutes having to do with, is consumers building like a solar farm out on the wastewater? I'm asking our, our commissioner from.
I can't comment on that.
Oh. Because it makes sense. I just wondered what, what that, what that, what that discussion was in our minutes that we received. Okay, I'll wait. I, I will be back to you. Okay, thank you. No rancid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I only have one question. And it would have been for Scott, so I don't know if Brenda can, here in the office, you, you may know. The, the new sign that was put at the cemetery at the entrance to the city with a different organization.
Large soccer.
It's one thing fireworks, don't like.
A lot of water.
You don't really recover.
No.
Not even if they dry out. Yeah. So like M A's, M A's. M A in the same.
No pressure.
Back in the day.
Oh, okay, so I drove up from Zealand. But this morning I drove from.
I'm actually missing.
Six o'clock, I call this council meeting order, please join me for the pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance is to the United States of America. In the republic of which we stand, on the nation under God, indivisible, with the great. Alright, first up is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move for approval of the agenda as.
Second.
I move in second, is any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no? Agenda is approved. Alright, first up is a special presentation, R R C essential certification.
Good evening, thank you so much for hosting me tonight. My name is Katie Higgs and I am the community planner with the redevelopment ready communities program as a part of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And I am excited to be here tonight to congratulate you, the city of Whitehall on reaching Essentials designation with the R R C program. Whitehall has been engaged in the program since twenty eighteen and has been working hard and I especially want to congratulate Brenda for all of her work on this program. The redevelopment ready communities program is a voluntary technical assistance program with the M A D C. That communities across the state can engage in and work on a set of planning and development related best practices. To, you know, align and and proactively prepare for development within their communities. And it is really reinforcing community driven development in communities across the state of Michigan. So I'm really pleased to present you this award tonight. There's also a package of information that I have sent to Brenda that lists the benefits of engaging with the redevelopment ready communities program. And what the essentials designation means for the city of Whitehall. And I am really thrilled to continue to support you and your work within the city over the next few years. And this designation is good for the next five years. So congratulations, Whitehall is the fifteenth community in the state to achieve this this status. And it is quite a heavy lift for communities. So thank you so much for your participation and congratulations. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have any, but I will present this award. Yes, would love to get a picture. Yeah, can I, can we get off here?
Sure.
I can head the log.
Where's the beacon?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Oh, yeah, there you go.
Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yes, you're welcome. Here.
I have a statement that the redevelopment ready community essentials designation would be a good thing for the continued growth of Whitehall. I'm glad that we now have the designation after a very long and thorough process. And I want to thank the staff of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for their guidance and patience with this special task. Special thanks to our clerk Brenda Bordan for her leadership in obtaining the designation. I know it's, it was a lot of work. I remember seeing the requirements at the very beginning of this process and thought it was gonna be a long road and it was.
It was.
You've done an excellent job, thank you so much, this is a good thing for our community.
Thank you.
Next up is the consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Second is discussion. Questions, comments?
I have one question. And I'm not sure Brenda can answer it or not, but she can.
I can.
Pass it to whoever needs to.
Wing it, yeah, there you go.
The last thing on, on the last page. Eco fuel services. You don't happen to know what that is, do you? That's what I'm looking for is, it says annual fee setup, modem and install. And I just, and it's under the motor pool fund. I was just kinda wondering if we could get a little bit more clarification on what it is.
Okay.
Since it was over seventy-five hundred L.
Right, I'll see what I can find out for you.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes.
There's all, all these different expenses for all these different people that are involved in these plays, put on playhouse. Honky Tonk and leaving Iowa and all that. Well, I would like to see, you know, how, how do, does the income from these things line up with, you know, all we see is expenses, we don't really know. Did the thing, was it worthwhile, that's kind of trying to figure out. Was all that expense worth it, did they sell us tickets and cover all this? I don't know, how are you finding that out?
I can request that type of report, I think we've done that in the past too where we have, it's difficult to see it all in one quick snapshot. Because there are some expenses that come out later or, you know, it's hard to always capture that in a snapshot, but I can certainly request it. And I think that Beth in the past has done like on the year end, perhaps like more of a picture of more of the show so you can see it in that type of layout rather than show by show.
We have gotten those in the past, but one thing, and I don't know if you can pass it along and I don't even know if it's possible for me to do it. I'd like to see more of a breakdown per, per performance as far as, I mean, I know some of those run several days.
Right, right.
But they usually seem to lump everything altogether, so you don't really know if one of them's, one of them does good, does real good and the other one fails.
Right.
You know, but we break even.
And I know that Beth is certainly looking at those things as she goes along because her programming is based on being successful and choosing those types of shows. So she's certainly looking for, you know, was that type of show successful or not? So whether you'll see those in a snapshot, she is always looking for that type of information to make sure it's a successful run forward. But yes, I can request it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, all those in favor of the consent agenda say yes.
Yes.
Those say no?
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Next up, messages. City manager tonight. Keith, you have anything?
Nothing this evening.
There was one question I had, I probably should have asked when we were talking about the money expenditure, no, actually on the consent agenda. Was it the public, county, county public's works minutes having to do with, is consumers building like a solar farm out on the wastewater? I'm asking our, our commissioner from.
I can't comment on that.
Cause it makes sense, I just wondered what that, what that, what's, what that discussion was in our minutes that we received. Okay, I'll wait.
I, I will be back to you.
Okay, thank you. No rancid.
Yeah, I guess I only have one question, it would have been for Scott, so I don't know if Brenda can, here in the office, you may know. The, the new sign that was for that cemetery at the entrance to the city with the different organizations. Who picks and chooses what organization to own it?
That, that was sitting right next to you, I think, Steve was part of that project, is that true, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, he might be able to respond more to that.
Well, I can give you, it came out of the Rotary, which I'm on Rotary. And what was brought up was, how do we let people know that Rotary is in the community and still function? And the idea was to renew that sign and then the discussion came up, well, what other nonprofits are in the community that wanna be involved in it? So I essentially went around to the nonprofits that were previously there and others that were and asked about their participation. And they actually, all the individual organizations paid for that sign, the sign cost the city nothing.
Okay, but, but everybody was content, I mean, I, I just went, I noticed that, you know, the, well, the basins go one way on there. The Montague Museum, the Circle Society, you know, all of those are, are pretty active groups within the community, but, but no.
And, you know, there's, there was always that concern that there would be somebody that didn't know about it, I didn't know about them. Or they knew about it and chose not to participate, so.
Yeah, if they choose not to, not to participate, I don't have a problem with that, but, but if they're, you know, if they're not asked, I guess. I, hey, I just heard some, well, different people why I didn't sell it so.
That's, that's, that's the reason that they wouldn't, weren't on there. And I would certainly, if there's any fault, it'd be mine that I didn't go to that organization and say, hey, and. I didn't know of all the organizations, I didn't, I didn't know that there were masons still active in the community. And part of it was I looked at the signs that were coming into Whitehall and looked at the signs that were coming into Montague and said, okay, let me ask those people. Certainly was not an intentional sight.
Sean?
Nothing tonight.
I have one question, maybe from the, Scott could probably answer, but he can pass on and get an answer back. Now that we have contracted with Muskegon Charter Township for our ordinance violations. If one wants to report a potential violation, who do they contact now? Do they contact someone from Muskegon Charter Township, do they contact our police department, who, you know?
I'll find out for you because that would be, I mean, Toby is the one that's doing the ordinance enforcement, but I have to check with Chief and Scott and see how they want that information to flow. If they want it to come through us or directly to us, we'll find out and let you know.
Yeah, I just, you know, if we're supposed to do something other than the way we've done it before, then.
Right, be good to know.
You know, be good for the whole public, you know, also something to put on our website or something.
Yep, absolutely.
That's all I have, simple.
Yeah. A couple things, first, we discussed the bathrooms a little bit, I think next year we need to look into some improvements during the Fourth of July. Fireworks at Goodrich Park for some portable toilets if we are gonna continue to lock up the evening building. My understanding that had occurred. Dropping a couple toilet, more toilets for the night probably would hurt us, probably would stop a lot of the dragon. And with the amount of people down there, you gotta plan on it, so. Um, the other thing is something I brought up in the past and I know Beth had talked about fees attached. But I still think that doing the movies at Goodrich during the summer months would be a decent idea. Buy a, a bowl upstream, kinda like what Tiny Town did, whatever they call that, Montague. Artisan market. Artisan market, I like Tiny Town better. But, um, I think we, we're missing out on something here that we could, we could utilize Goodrich Park, we've got a nice hill. If we put it down towards the west end, people can sit on the hill and watch a movie. I know there's some, according to Beth, there's some attached fees for what costs to run a movie. But, yeah, businesses and if they decide they wanna sponsor a movie, I mean, we could do one a week from June, July and August. I mean, just pick a night that's different from what Montague has and people wanna come down there, people are always looking for stuff to be in the summer. People that come into town and people that live here and if they, we put up a theater, put up, buy some speakers and a projector and it can't be terrible nowadays. I mean, I did some, some research, I mean, it's not terrible for cost wise and I mean, it doesn't have to be state of the art, but if you search somewhere with it, I think it would be kinda cool. People go sit down there and bring their popcorn and their blankets and have a good time, so.
I would like to head that up. I would, I would be that person that takes the ratings of this carriage and moves it down the field.
I could probably.
I support that.
I could probably get some numbers. Knew I would, shouldn't have said that. I think that was in that document that I gave everybody too. But, but I, I, I do, cause I, I'm seeing, the sad thing is, is we come up with these good ideas and everything else and, and all of a sudden you see it here and you see it here and you see it here. And it's like, gosh, we had this idea three years ago and we just sat on our hands and I don't know what the, I've seen quite a few people in Montague. And, and I know Fruitport does it, there's some other ones that have the same thing and that we gotta show Indiana Jones the Temple of Doom or something. Something simple and if it costs a couple hundred bucks and somebody wants to, some nice business wants to throw some money at it, someone wants to sell popcorn, whatever, you know. We can make it what we wanna make it, but I think, I think we're missing out on something, I really do.
And Beth would say come to the theater.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I, I knew she would, and then like I said, it's.
But you're right.
Yeah, I mean, outdoors is a good thing too when people don't get out enough in the outdoors anymore, so. And I'm thinking maybe we follow people there, kinda keep the geese. Away as well.
Without a, without a champion, a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, I'll get some, I'll get some rice and forest for next time.
I think there's great potential for local individuals that would support a movie night.
Yep.
I certainly would consider supporting that.
And we've got enough, like I said, we've got enough places around that have trailers and sell food and everything else. Like I said, we can make this a bigger and little, what we want. Hopefully, that's it.
Alright, um, so this past Tuesday, we had fireworks in, in Whitehall. I, I thought they were a great show, I was certainly happy with it. I sit on the committee that made it happen and we're talking about doing it again next year. Certainly gonna be looking for ways to raise the money to do it again. I haven't heard any negativity on, on it, so. What should the show cost? It was fifteen thousand dollars.
Did, did we agree to that?
Well, the city of Whitehall put in five thousand, the city of Montague put in five thousand. And the committee, through their efforts, raised the rest of the money. And we, we do have money in the account for next year. So we're well on our way to having funds, of course, everything goes up, so I don't, I don't know what it's gonna be next year. And we had a meeting today and Matt Simon, who does the fireworks in Montague, was interested in some sort of partnership with our committee. Expressed his thoughts on not doing his next year.
I saw, I saw an aerial shot, somebody had put all the people that went out there. Wow.
But there's, there's regulations that we have to live with that make it difficult for our location. One of the ideas that he was proposing was to do it from Cobble Park to meet the safety zone. Now you're not gonna shutting down business thirty-one for six, eight hours. How, and Dot would feel about that, I don't know how our fire people would feel about that.
Oh, that's a state. I think that was a pawn off.
Yeah, so there's, there's these things.
Quite honestly, the best thing to do is march. I mean, if, if.
Yeah, this is not the.
Yeah, yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah. As far as location, because my understanding is Montague shut the launch ramp down.
Yes, they did. And, and people were, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
To, to meet the, the legal requirements.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And apparently it hasn't been done in the past, so.
It's the same thing Luddington does, Luddington actually shuts down the, the end of the road there with the, with the big launch ramp. I mean, they shut that whole thing down and they, they start ticketing and pulling cars at like five thirty and lowered.
So that's, the whole fireworks thing is, hopefully we're gonna do it again next year, but we'll, we'll see how everything goes. And then I, I just wanna say that next weekend we have Walk the Beat in Whitehall. Big effort that a lot of people have put a lot of work into it, particularly a lot of the, a lot of the individuals from, from Canterbury Day have made great efforts. And done a great job of organizing this, so I think it's gonna be a, a, a real good event for our community. I encourage everybody to, to get out there and, and next weekend and, and enjoy the, this beautiful community, this weather community and all the music that's gonna be there. Also the host activity, there'll be a pig roast for the community, at no charge to the community, so. This is, this will be a good thing for the community. The weather is good, it's a rain or shine, yeah, so. Yep.
Not that we don't need the rain.
Alright. Any commission appointment? Any comments on that?
No, I don't, I don't know Rick personally, I can know his wife, but I know they've been near you for, for a long time and. It doesn't look like anybody works for the, for the government, so.
Wonder what people complain about. In Ohio City, I mean, nobody wants to be on a compliance commission or, I'm understanding, no.
So I, I, I guess we're just looking for, so you want a motion to approve?
I would, I would like that.
I will make a motion that we approve, Mr. Rick Blainstrom to the planning commission at the recommendation of the mayor.
I'll second. Seconded, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those say no? He is approved for a seat on the planning commission. Next up is public comment, public, yes sir. Public official.
Kim Seer, Muskegon County Commissioner for this area, Mr. Sigga, the Consumers Power does in fact have a two thousand acre lease on the wastewater. With hopes of putting in solar panels, so that's, that's all that we know. They've, they've had it for a while now, they haven't really moved on it yet, but they, it looks like they may be soon, so. Two thousand acres, that store's gonna take away some of our crop land out there, but the income generated from the, from the solar installation is gonna more than cover for our loss there, so.
There is a, there is an income to the county for that?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Above the lease? Above, beyond the lease?
I don't know the numbers, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
So. But they said that it would, cause I asked the same question when Dave Johnson came up and said, well, we're gonna lose two thousand acres of crops. I mean, that's, there's some cash there.
Sure.
And he said, well, more to make up for it, that, that was the comment he made, so I, I don't know the details, but, okay?
Bring them to us when you have them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else have a, make public comment? Okay, we're onto old business, I don't believe there's any old business. New business is Resolution twenty-three twenty-seven, commercial rehabilitation exemption.
I'll move to the second.
Second.
Second, there's a discussion on this. I'll just make the same comments I made about two or three times on this, I'm not in favor of tax assumptions at all and especially not for tenures. I think that's way too long to give a tax exemption for.
Anyone else?
Although, we had, I mean, it had, it's trapped in a split, we had already voted on this.
Yes.
But this is just evidently more language.
This is, well, I, I think the history of this is we, we gave it, then we took it back and.
Right, but then we, we voted on it again, but this is, this is.
Their format.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the, the, we already approved it, but they're, they're asking for approval for this language specific to it.
So this is the state's format?
Yes. We already approved our own format. State has a higher level of authority than we do.
If there's no further discussion, we'll call police.
Head over.
Yes.
Sigga?
Yes.
Farnell?
Yes.
Lully?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Saltzer?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three twenty-seven is approved. Next up is public comment, anybody wanna make any further comments? Oh, alright, thank you for coming. Roger.